So folks in the audience, if you just give us a few minutes, we have approximately 190-ish. Folks are going to join us on live stream, so we're just going to wait for them to populate on the screen before we get this to call to order. Well, this is still going up, so it's just going to take a few more seconds. And again, I apologize for us running late. We did go longer in executive session. Just gonna give us a few more minutes. That's registered, right? I'm just gonna wait for this list to keep popping on. Seems to have leveled out, so. I'm gonna go ahead and start the meeting. Thank you, everyone. With that tap of the gavel, I would like to call the Seneca Valley School Board Action Meeting of August 9th, 2021 to order. At this time, I would ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. And if you are able, please rise and join me in the pledge. Thank you, everyone. At this time, I'd ask Ms. Missland to call the role, please.
Ms. Bradle here, Mr. DeTulio.
Here.
Ms. Harrison here, Mr. Hester, Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Nickel.
President.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Ms. Whittle, Mr. Whitson.
Here. Thank you very much. We'll start off our meeting with the information reports of Ms. Andressi, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President. We just have a few dates to remember this evening. Monday, August 16th is our substitute training day. That's next Monday. Also held next Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday will be our Summer Professional Development Academy. August 17th and 19th, we will be hosting new teacher induction. Our first in-service staff day is a floating day to be taken any day next week, August 16th through the 20th. August 23rd will be our all-staff opening day. That'll be held in the intermediate high school auditorium. August 24th is our third teacher in-service day, which leads to our first day of school for all students on Wednesday, August 25th. And also, just a reminder that on September 3rd, we will be hosting veteran recognition at our second home football game in Next Year Stadium. That's all I have unless you have questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? I think because we have a good fan base, right, fan base, participants here, I would like to invite everyone to become fans of the Seneca Valley Football Team for September 3rd for Veterans Recognition is something very special that we do, and I think it's important, you know, get the word out if you would. Just if you show up, do it. It's a great honor for the veterans of the district. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on in our agenda to the agency reports, and we're gonna start with the VOTech, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Jacobs. I'm not sure which one of you would like to go first.
It's on me this month, Mr. President. The Joint Operating Committee for the VOTech met last Thursday. The meeting was preceded by a closed session to discuss a student issue. The action meeting, the business meeting, was just that. There was a presentation of the student handbook, presentation of the Health and Safety Plan, presentation of the school calendar, et cetera, et cetera. Pretty much business as usual. No outstanding issues to report.
Thank you very much. Any questions about the VOTech information update? Hearing and seeing none, then we will move on. Oh.
Sorry, Ms. I apologize. Not to necessarily report. I think you had mentioned last week what you thought our numbers were from Seneca Valley over the VOTech. Can you reiterate those? Or have any further update on? Just because we have a large group, this is the number of students from Seneca Valley that make their trip over and are part of our VOTech.
Yeah, I do not have the specific numbers, but we were slightly ahead of last year.
Okay, which is give or take like 118 to 120, 125. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. There's no other questions. We'll move on the agenda. In the backup, you will find that you have financial reports for operations, food services, tax collection reports, and capital funds, or capital project funds, excuse me. An item that's not on the agenda, but should have been, I apologize for not having it added earlier, is an update of COVID statistics by Dr. Vitale. Dr. Vitale, please.
Thank you, Mr. DeTulio. The first item that I presented to the board on Friday, and I update you via email, but then since that time, I also track cases. This is all public data. This is not something that is a secret. You can certainly look at the Pennsylvania Department of Health website and see what I'm seeing. You can also look at the CDC website. So a lot of this data is coming from there. It's coming from Johns Hopkins. It's coming from CIDRAP, the Center for Infectious Disease Research and Policy, and Dr. Osterholm out of the University of Minnesota. So let me begin by saying the COVID cases in our county and region have begun to trend up. As of Friday, August 6th, the CDC still has Butler County listed as substantial. However, based on this week's county numbers that we internally track in my office, we look at ZIP codes, we look at county numbers from the Pennsylvania Department of Health website. I fully anticipate that Butler County will be moved up to the next level high sometime this week. Remember, and this is important for the public to understand, because I had to get my head around it, there are now four levels of community transmission through the CDC tracking website. Last year, the Pennsylvania Department of Health, working with the Pennsylvania Department of Education, only had three levels. Last year, those three levels, there were numbers tied to them, thresholds tied to them, and they made it very clear to schools what those numbers were. So to move from low to moderate, it was 50 cases across seven days, and that was a seven-day rolling average. Then to move from moderate to high, again, across a seven-day rolling average, it was 100 cases. So that was incident rate is how they were looking at community transmission. But they were also not just looking at that. They were looking at the PCR rate. And so if you, to go from low to moderate, it was 5% PCR rate. To go from moderate to high, it was going to 10%. And it was or, it was not both. It was one or the other. And schools were made to follow that in most cases with an attestation form. The attestation form no longer exists as of today from the Department of Education, Pennsylvania Department of Education, or Pennsylvania Department of Health. In addition, those levels and those thresholds do not exist. They have archived that material. But if you go to their website, they now send you to the CDC Community Transmission Tracking Site where there are now four levels. Again, this is something you can look at. It's public data. High is the highest of four levels. We're at the third level, which is called substantial from the CDC. Vaccinations in Butler County, you can track those on the Pennsylvania Department of Health website as well as the CDC website by sorting vaccinations in Butler County on CDC. Last week, since my report to the board last Monday, 916 more people, according to the websites, are now fully vaccinated, which puts the county at 51.7% according to the CDC website for full vaccinations. According to the infectious disease experts, we need this number to reach 70% to slow the Delta variant down. And I will talk more about the county vaccination rates from the PA DOH. I'll get to that. COVID deaths in Butler County remain extremely low, most often in zero, thank goodness. As of Friday, CDC and the PA DOH were reporting zero. Today, I was on a 2:00 phone call with the, with doctors from Butler Health System. One doctor, Dr. Love, infectious disease expert, who has been giving schools very good guidance since the beginning of the pandemic. We were on with the county commissioners, all the Butler County superintendents, and also Dr. Greg Hellier from UPMC Emergency Room. So they have been great resources for us. They did notify us there have been two COVID deaths in the county that they will be reporting. That's not yet showing. As of yesterday, when I looked, the PA DOH website does not have that recorded yet. The data will likely change significantly in the next two weeks, according to the experts, not me. Who are the experts? Infectious disease doctors, medical doctors, emergency room doctors, pediatricians. The CDC map, we have been monitoring closely, and when we began looking more closely at that, when we knew PDE, Pennsylvania Department of Education, and PA DOH, what they were taking away their threshold material for us, and making more things optional, and making more things recommendations and not requirements, we began studying the map quite closely about four weeks ago. And at that point, a lot of the southern states were colored red, which is the high designation, the highest level of the four designations, based on total cases for that seven-day period. The next level, substantial, is orange. That's where we're sitting as of yesterday. It could have changed today. I'm told it has not. And the next level is moderate. It's color-coded yellow. And the next level is low. It's color-coded blue on the CDC website. When we began looking at that map four weeks ago, the mid, parts of the Midwest, California, and the southern states were extremely red. There were no counties, very few counties that were in yellow and blue. And then we saw that map continue to creep up. Butler County is now sitting at orange. We were about three weeks ago at yellow, the moderate level. So we are seeing that cases are moving more in this direction. The national landscape is always something that I talk about based on the research and the reading that I do. And so the latest national landscape is showing that Louisiana is leading the nation in cases. Florida is right behind, and then Texas. According to the New York Times yesterday morning, they were reporting that the cases in Florida and Texas are swamping hospitals. We are not seeing that here yet, and we have spoken to several hospitals here in our region. So let's go to the local COVID numbers now, and let's talk more about those. As of August 4th, and that's when we go in, you know, Lisa goes in every day to pull these numbers, to look at county numbers, to look at ZIP code numbers. So as of August 4th, Butler County was at 12.2 on a 14-day rolling average. But 27 cases were reported, and that was a bit of a spike, on August 3rd. I went in today, and now that 14-day rolling average is up to 17 cases in Butler County. Seneca Valley ZIP codes, that's very important for us to look at. Very few organizations or entities are mining that data. We have been mining that on our own internal spreadsheet since the beginning of the pandemic. We were at 3.4 cases in the Seneca Valley ZIP codes. How do you get a .4? It's not a .4 of a person. That is a 14-day rolling average. We were at 3.4 as of August 4th. When I went into that spreadsheet today, we were at five in the Seneca Valley ZIP codes on a 14-day rolling average. The Seneca Valley ZIP codes on a seven-day rolling average per 100,000 people, because again, you're looking at proportions. Many of you already know this. As of August 4th, we were at 41.72 cases. So you see how those are starting to go up. Now, where it gets subjective is, what's a lot, right? Is 41 a lot? Is it not? That's a seven-day rolling average per 100,000. 12 cases were reported over the weekend in our ZIP codes. There's usually not a lot of activity with reports over the weekend. Those typically come in by tomorrow and Wednesday is what Lisa and I've noticed. Again, that's on the Pennsylvania Department of Health website. You can just click on your ZIP code and all of our ZIP codes, and you'll see the same numbers we do. The Butler County difference in confirmed cases. So this data we mine from the COVID-19 early warning monitoring website that the Pennsylvania Department of Health updates typically every Friday. This is something that schools in the Commonwealth used last year, and we are still using. That has not changed. The Butler County difference in confirmed cases, the most recent seven days versus the last seven days, per 100,000 people is up 65 cases as of August 5th. We are also up 22 from last week, 22 cases, and we had 11 cases two weeks ago. So go back two weeks ago, and you look at this most recent seven days compared to the last seven days per 100,000. Two weeks ago at 11, last week 22. This latest data poll is 65. Again, is that a lot? I'm not a public health expert. I don't know. The Butler County incident rate, now this is the most recent seven days per 100,000. That's at 60.7. The Butler County PCR rate as of today is sitting at 7.3%. That is up from 4.2% last week and 2.8% two weeks ago. So you can see it, 2.8, 4.2, 7.3 on the PCR positivity rate in our county. Vaccination rates. We pull this from two places to compare the data. We pull it from the Pennsylvania government PA DOH dashboard, and we also pull it from the CDC dashboard. So the vaccination rate I gave you earlier is from the CDC site. But if you go to the Pennsylvania dashboard, it is showing a little higher of a rate. So I expect that's just a lag in the data between the Commonwealth and the feds. So that's where the lag is. But they usually do catch up within about a week. Currently, the Pennsylvania dashboard from the DOH is reporting that Butler County has 60.1% first doses of our total population and 56.1 fully covered. Additional resources that we mine, Johns Hopkins, we look at their weekly report. And of special note, we want to point out that reported on Friday, the Pfizer vaccine is expected to receive full FDA approval. We know to this point, all three vaccines are emergency use authorization. Johns Hopkins is reporting that Pfizer has submitted all of their data, and the FDA is taking an all-hands-on-deck approach to get this fully approved as quickly as possible, no later than September 6th. But this might actually come as early as August 15th. That would just be on Pfizer. The other important data point is, as I mentioned, we were in the Butler meeting today, and we consulted with Dr. Love, infectious disease expert, Dr. Hellier, UPMC Emergency Room doctor, to see what our hospitals are experiencing. And they are not, they are experiencing an uptick. I don't want to speak for them, and I'm paraphrasing. But they are not being overwhelmed to date. They are concerned. The Pennsylvania Department of Health, Dr. Allison Beam has indicated, the Secretary of Health has indicated that she's recommending masks for schools, but it will be a local decision, and she is not, at this point, mandating this for school districts. She did make a statement that she supports universal masking as a requirement in the K-12 setting, as a critical layer to facilitating safe, full-time, in-person learning. And they are asking school districts to actually implement these recommendations. Beam said, "But at this time, there is not a plan to mandate a masking requirement in schools." The governor has also, Governor Wolf has been quoted as saying that he's not going to require it, that it is still a local decision, not going to require it in schools. And as we know, as of June 28th, the masking requirement was lifted in the Commonwealth. As of today, breaking news from the Washington Post indicated that the Pentagon will mandate to all active-duty military personnel that they be vaccinated, and it will be required by mid-September. What does that matter? That matters to schools, even though we're not in the military. The other resource and update that I want to provide you, not a resource, but rather an update, the board has been made aware that as of today, we had two COVID cases reported from employees, 12-month employees. Those are the first cases that have been reported to us since students left. So as of today, we have two positive COVID cases, and they are at the location of our central office. We have performed contact tracing, and we're working with the Department of Health for those two cases. That is all I have for the school board this evening. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Dr. Vitale? Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a comment, if I may. When an epidemiologist looks at the outbreak of an infectious disease in a host population, that disease outbreak is categorized in three levels based on decades of experience. Endemic level is not a value-laden number. It's just what we expect. So annually, 36,000 people die of influenza in the United States. That's the endemic death level. Not good, obviously. Not bad. It's a number. When endemic level is exceeded, when the epidemic threshold is hit, then we talk about an epidemic, epi being upon the population, epidemics. When there's a widespread geographic element to the definition, it becomes a pandemic. So we look at things in terms of history. Is it endemic? Is it epidemic? Is it pandemic? We're clearly in a pandemic here, but we're in a pandemic of, it seems like forever, but really less than two years we've had to study. So I think when Dr. Vitale, you know, struggles with, when do we take steps? What are the numbers? If this were influenza, we could look at the epidemic levels and come up with trigger points fairly easily. With COVID, and particularly beta COVID, the beta variant, we don't have that experience. So as I believe you said in our last meeting, our crystal balls are broken. We don't have a good crystal ball. We don't have a good history to look ahead to help us make predictive decisions about the disease. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Just for everyone or anyone who doesn't know, Mr. Peterson is a retired expert in public health and safety. So he's not just speaking off the cuff. He is well-trained, educated, and knowledgeable on everything we're discussing with when it comes to COVID. So just so everyone knows.
That's very kind of you. Now that I'm retired, I hope to get a life.
We hope so, too. Any other questions or comments? This time, seeing and hearing no one yell at me from the back, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is our public comment portion of our... I'm sorry, did I miss the financial reports? If I did, I apologize. So in your backup, financial reports are provided, operations, food services, tax collection reports, and capital projects funds. And I'm sure if you had any questions, you already addressed them with Ms. Burtner. Now we'll move on to the public comment portion of our meeting. Just so you know, we have approximately 20 people who have signed up to speak tonight. A few things everyone should be aware of. The way that this will work is I have these randomly up here. I'll just go right in order as I have them. You'll be invited up to the microphone. You'll get four minutes to speak. Just to let everyone know, since our 20 speakers, we do have a 30-minute time limit by policy for those wanting to speak. If someone has already spoken to the subject you're going to speak to, and if you just want to say, you know, I'll just pass on it, feel free to do that. You're more than invited up to still speak. I'm not trying to shut anyone off. However, when we get to that 30-minute time mark, we're going to have to do a little bit of, it's Robert's rules of order and how we would extend that time. So we'll let you know if we get there. But again, if you are short and everyone just, you know, takes a minute or so, you know, it won't take long. But if it does go towards that 30 minutes, understand that we will have to do a little, I guess a proper word is Robert's rules of order, you know, so we'll just go through that. But we get there, I'll let you know. So if you're expecting another speaker, and all of a sudden we start talking about doing something different, understand that's just what's going to happen so we can run the meeting efficiently. So again, we're just going to start with the first one on this list. It's Dan Coleman. He's here to speak on universal masking, lists his address. It is 429 Isabella Court, Zillenoak, PA. And Jeff Wooderson as his school board director. It'd be Mike Jacobs as actually your school board director.
Oh, okay. I had that wrong. I know, Mike.
Not a problem. We will make corrections. So again, you have four minutes, and what I'll do, not just for you, but everyone, when you get to about 3:30, I'll just give you a little tap, just so you know to start wrapping things up. So you have four minutes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. You know, as we just heard there, you know, we continue to have a problem with the pandemic. Sure. Is that better? Okay. So, you know, we continue to see cases rise, especially in the southern United States. We see a lot of children unfortunately being hospitalized due to this. The seven-day rolling average out of the Times today, the New York Times, is 216. That matches the peak throughout the entire pandemic. Unfortunately, it's likely to rise further. I want to thank the board for the investment of time and due diligence to look at the caseloads, to track the PCR rates. I was here for the working meeting last week. And I really want to commend everybody for doing the homework here to try and figure out where are we now, where might we be headed, and what's the best way to handle that. With that in mind, I have a couple of questions regarding the return to school plan, mostly implementation. So we're recommending masks. We're not mandating them. So I understand that. There's a lot of different factors that play into that. It's not an easy path to sort of carve here. When we're seeing the recommended, I guess one thing I'd ask the board to do, and this is probably part of the plan already, maybe it just hasn't been communicated, but generally, if you want to recommend masks, you know, people tend to go one of two ways pretty quick on mask wearing. If we want to recommend it, we want to make sure we're being, we're giving that a good push. Otherwise, there is a lot of people that simply would read that and go on about their day and, you know, not really tell their kids they need to wear masks. The second question, I think you were getting into this, Mr. Peterson, is we need to hopefully establish some threshold. I realize this is difficult, but I guess I'm wondering if does the board have a particular threshold of number of cases per day, number of cases within the district, number of students once we're in session that are sick? What would cause us to move from a recommendation to a more of a mask mandate? This is just sort of an open question for the group. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Nickel brought up a good point for, you know, everyone that's new to this process. I should have said this in my opening comments. When you folks come up to speak, we're here to listen to you. This isn't really a Q&amp;A-type environment. So we're not going to be necessarily, you know, you might ask questions. We're not necessarily going to answer you directly and get into that type of debate. So this is really just for us to hear your comments, your concerns. So understand that if you are asking questions, we will jot them down. We'll be thinking of those ourselves. Or if there's information that we need, then we would be asking the administration to provide that, but it will not be a back-and-forth type Q&amp;A session. Thank you for that reminder, Mr. Nickel. Well, we're going to move on to our next speaker. I try to reset all my ism so I can track things. This is Jason Stevens. Subject he would like to speak on is school return safety plan. List his address as 104 Castle Brook Drive, Canterbury Township, PA. And I do not know who your school board member is, but we will find out for you. You have four minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for the time. The CDC has called the Delta variant as twice as contagious and transmissible as prior variants that we dealt with during last school year. We all remember how many cases occurred in this district last year, particularly with the older students in this building and the others on this campus, and how many students were forced into quarantine during exposure. At times, there were hundreds of students in this district in quarantine, all while masks were required last year. Like to highlight some recent events that I find relevant to the Health and Safety Plan that is in front of the board this evening. On July 18th, the American Academy of Pediatrics recommended masks for all students aged 2+ in schools regardless of vaccination status. On 7/27, the CDC backed that up with the same recommendation for all students K through 12 regardless of vaccination status. On 8/4, the CDC updated their guidance again and added a recommendation for all fully vaccinated people who have a known exposure to someone with a suspected or confirmed COVID case to be tested three to five days after exposure regardless of whether symptoms are present. On July 15th, the school district released an interim school safety plan, and I quote, "Therefore, for the school year, we intend to implement the following. Masks for all students and staff will be optional unless we are mandated by PDE or PA DOH, and/or our county numbers should go back to substantial. Masks for unvaccinated individuals will be recommended but not required while in our schools. I call your attention to the line in your plan that says, 'or our county numbers should go back to substantial.'" On 8/1, the CDC moved Butler County and eight other counties in western Pennsylvania into the substantial spread category for COVID transmission. Those are all facts. I quote an article that CNN published yesterday. I quote an article that CNN published yesterday. In Florida, which has the second highest rate of new cases per capita after Louisiana, "Children's hospitals and staff are overwhelmed," said Dr. Eileen Marty, an infectious disease expert at Florida International University. Quote, "The numbers of cases in our hospitals, in children, and our children's hospitals are completely overwhelmed," Marty told CNN's Jim Shudo. Quote, "Our pediatrician, the nursing, the staff are all exhausted, and the children are suffering, and it is absolutely devastating. Our children are very much affected, we've never seen numbers like this before," end quote. Second quote from the same article. "We have not seen kids pile into pediatric intensive care units across the South like we are seeing right now." Dr. Peter Hotez, the dean of the National School of Medicine at the Baylor College of Medicine, told CNN on Friday. "We all remember how many students were in quarantine for close contact last year in this district. Non-political groups, the Centers for Disease Control, the American Academy for Pediatrics, and many of the other sources that Dr. Vitali cited in her remarks are recommending masks. They base these recommendations on science, not politics. Political groups tend to follow the beliefs of their party, which are not always based on science or facts from transmission rates and other sources. I have no intention of getting into a political debate here tonight. I urge you to consider the science and the facts. The district's interim plan that was released on 7/15 calls for masks once substantial transmission is released and is reached in Butler County. That fact occurred on August 1st. If you cannot stick to your most recently published interim plan and mandate masks now that we are in substantial spread in Butler County, I am interested in understanding what scientific studies the board has access to that indicate masks are not helpful in reducing COVID spread that the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics do not have available to them when they made their recommendations. I would also like to understand how we as parents can trust future information coming from the board and the district if you cannot follow guidelines in the plan you released just three weeks ago. My wife and I want our children in the classrooms. That's what we believe is best for them. They learned via cyber last year for the entire school year, but they will only be here if you require masks and do full contract tracing and notification after exposure. I urge the board to vote to amend the return to school plan to require masks and provide full contact tracing for all exposed students so the parents can follow these new CDC guidelines related to testing after exposure, regardless of symptoms. Thank you for the opportunity to speak."
Thank you very much. Next up is Michael Prop, here to speak on money, masks and CRT. List the address as 316 Lancaster Road, Harmony, PA. And that may make me your school board rep. Sorry, just trying to get some work done here too. Keeping the meeting working. So again, welcome. You have four minutes and whenever you write, thank you.
All right, I don't, I don't really like, I have more questions. And I might make a little bit of comment, but when's the best time to have a question and answer session? I mean, like all this information is put on this sheet and I was expecting the question and answer session to be after the rest of the meeting topics were covered.
I guess what I'll say is, you know, especially since I'm your rep, it makes this a little bit easier. My phone number is on the website. Or if you want to stick around after, I'd be happy to speak with you as well. But please feel free to give me a call and we can discuss any issue. And, and I'm going to recommend this to, to everyone out there. Your school board members are us and my number is on the site. You can always send an email, but I know if you were looking for questions and answers, please be, feel free to give me a call. I'm happy to discuss anything and everything, you know, about this district, good, bad and ugly, you know? So that's probably the easiest way, if you're looking for a question and answer type thing, is to contact me directly.
All right, well, that's what I like to do. So I'll contact you before I come to another school board meeting to see what your responses are to my questions and.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Eric, just to, I could add to that, I mean, as Eric, no, it's just about our, our contact information. As Eric stated, or Ms. Preston stated, his number is the only one on the website. But to the extent you know your board representative and want to reach out to and speak to your board representative, there's a Seneca Valley School Board email inbox, which I think a lot of you probably know. If you just simply request contact information or for your board member to reach out to you, I'm sure I speak for everyone here that we're happy to reach out and do that same sort of Q and A.
All right, thank you very much.
Our next speaker, Ben Bauer, here to speak on health and safety. This is, his address is 146 Wolf Run Road in Cranberry Township. Not sure who your board member is, but we will find that out for you. So welcome up to the mic.
Good evening, thanks for the time to speak to you guys. I'm a parent of three children in the district and an SV alum. Good to see you again, Dr. McKinley, it's been a while since seventh grade math. I'm here tonight because I would like to see the health and safety plan updated to only state masks optional. I would like to commend Governor Wolf for coming out and saying that the local districts have the final say in what is best for their students. I understand there are recommendations from the PDE and Department of Health, but again, the law states that local districts are governed by elected school board members who represent their community and the community is what decides what is best for each district. So again, please remove the verbiage, quote, "Unless we are mandated by PDE and the PA Department of Health and our county numbers should go back to substantial." I would also like to address an article written in the Cranberry Eagle about last week's school board meeting by Alex Wiedenoff. This leads me into my next point of how important it is to listen to your community and not get sidetracked by the misrepresentation that is so prevalent today. Those of us who were at the school board meeting last week are blessed to get a firsthand account of how this article is a misrepresentation of the pulse of our community. Mr. Wiedenoff wrote, I quote, "On the anti-mask side, several parents claimed citing vague, quote unquote, studies." The quote, "Anti-mask side" is a gross misrepresentation. The side I am on is health and wellness. I am not anti-anything. You know, I'm in education and I would never label one of my students. So now are we at a place where parents get labeled for speaking up for their children? Parents that are speaking up for their kids are not anti-anything. They're pro-health, pro-immune system, pro-living a life of how our bodies are created to live. We teach our students to use critical thinking skills, to analyze influences and to advocate for a healthy lifestyle. It is time we as a community embrace those skills and give parents the choice on what is best for their families. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Matthew Hugus, here to speak on masking in schools. List his address as 229 Meadowbrook Drive in Cranberry. We will get your, oh, okay, we believe that is Mr. Nickel. So you're invited up to the, the microphone. Thank you, and you have four minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, thank you for all that you guys do for the students and the children in the community. I originally had prepared some statements about efficacy of masks, the lack of tests on the over-the-counter cloth masks that are worn by the majority of the students, faculty and staff on campus, not only in this district, but in other districts. There is zero clinical efficacy data, no clinical trials ever done to prove the, the efficacy of the masks that are predominantly worn by the students, faculty and staff, none. All of the studies are observational in nature. And I actually went to the CDC's website. They partner with a group, the Infectious Diseases Society of America. Their website is idsociety.org. They say on their website, as of the 28th of July, "Masking may reduce viral inoculum." Why do they use this expression of such possibilities instead of words that are more certain and factual? Why do they use the word "may"? It's because of what I just said. In the next paragraph on their website, "There is a limited number of randomized controlled trials and they're all observational. Not one of them is clinical in nature." That being said, the summary of their findings again say that based on observational animal studies, masks appear to be effective, they only appear to be effective. There's no factual data backing up their efficacy. We know, I, I'm a data-driven individual, I'm a health and physical education teacher, but I have four college degrees. I love research, I'm a giant nerd. I do not look at things through the myopic view of the echo chamber of the people that I hang around. I, I know Dr. Vitale can tell you, there is an inconsumable amount of information about masks, COVID, vaccines. Speaking on the vaccines, we're talking about a newly redefined World Health Organization definition for herd immunity. You spoke to a number of 70-some-odd percent that we need to get to for inoculations to be at herd immunity. I wasn't going to speak on vaccines, but because I've read about it, the World Health Organization recently changed their own verbiage from naturally acquired immunity, meaning you get infected, you recover, to vaccinated population percentages. Why would they do that? Why, why would they change their own definition? I'm not getting into politics, I'm just saying if you're going to change the goalpost, we should know why and we as a community should look into that. Not just for us as adults, but for our kids moreover. Back to that study, they also admit that even if you read the whole article, they can't even say with absolute certainty that masks work. Or, and this is in their words, I quote, "It could be due in large part to the reality of social distancing, hand washing and other mitigation efforts that are effective at limiting the exposure rate of COVID-19." The PCR tests, they are not going to be used any longer by the CDC. One of the reasons is that the cycle rate is too high. The, the inventor of the, the PCR, Kerry Mullis, we can't even ask him about his thoughts on it because he has passed away. But if you go and you Google the inventor of the PCR test, he says, "The PCR rates being run at the rates they are are producing false positives." They can't differentiate between the flu, A, flu B, or any of another myriad, including a common cold, of coronaviruses. It was stated that 216 kids in the United States are in hospital right now and one is too many. But out of the 75 million people under the age of 18 in the United States, that is a .00000288%. I feel for any kid in the hospital, but we have to look at the comorbidities involved and we have to understand the full ramifications of masking our children. I have three kids, they hate it. I'm a teacher in an elementary school, my kids hate it. As soon as they touch that mask, the efficacy is gone. If it's not over their nose, worn properly, fitted properly, it doesn't work. It doesn't work if it's not worn properly. And if you have a kid that's been a first grader, you know that mask isn't being worn properly. Please make the appropriate decision for our kids. It's not politics, it's about the health and welfare of our children. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Scott, no Scott, I can't read your writing, I'm sorry, I'm going to butcher your name. Calendar? Yes, that, that would be you, sir. I apologize for that. Your, your address is listed. Your address is listed as 501 Hedgrove Court. We will find out who your school board director is. You have four minutes.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'll try to be brief as I can here, but thank you very much for every, everybody does for this district. I mean that very sincerely. So I just want to say I'm here, you know, as some's already echoed here. I'm in, here in support of continued parental choice regarding wearing masks. So I want to echo that. Me personally, I'm the belief that, you know, the risks outweigh the benefits when it comes to, you know, forcing kids to wear masks on a few levels, whether it be potential oxygen deprivation, germ buildup in the mask, the emotional and social impact on kids having to wear masks through the whole school day. And, you know, just can make the whole school experience really tough for a kid. However, even in light of this, I'm, I'm in support of a parental choice. Cause I know there's, you know, passionate arguments or, you know, beliefs on both sides. So I, I get that. But at the very least, at the very least, I would humbly ask to please continue, not just now, but going into the future, even if under some pressure or whatever that comes the way of the district, to continue to fight for keeping that as a parental choice. It's really important, really important. You know, we can't eliminate all risk from life, you know? And, you know, let's not make decisions and I don't want to make decisions based on fear, right? Fear has a lot of consequences that really takes away the joy of life, you know? And I just personally believe we can be encouraged from the Psalms, like in Psalm 91. You know, "If you make the Lord your refuge, if you make the Most High your shelter, no evil will conquer you, no plague will come near your home, for he will order his angels to protect you wherever you go." So, you know, I, I just want to encourage and I just thank this district for the great work you've done. This has been a great community to live in. We've lived here since, I believe, 2000, beginning of 2009. And, you know, I believe that will continue on to be a great place to live. And, you know, so I, I just want to thank you for the time and, you know, that. And also just on a side note, we have a lot of great, amazing soldiers in the military who risked their lives, maybe some in this room that have fought to have that ability to, to have the freedom to make that decision, some have even paid the ultimate price. So I want to honor that today as well. So let's continue to, you know, let the, the parents make that choice. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Maria Machia. Did I butcher that bad? I'll let you correct me once you get up to the microphone. List her address as 804 Gallant Fox Lane in Cranberry Township. Gallant Fox? How bad did I butcher it?
Medea.
Medea, sorry.
Very common.
Leslie Brady is your school board rep.
Okay.
You have four minutes, ma'am.
Thanks. Sorry. I'm here as a concerned mom and not how I imagined, starting kindergarten, fighting for his freedom. I'm not here to present any data because there's data to support each side, anywhere you want to find it. This is about our students' education. This is about making their social and emotional wellbeing a priority. Let's leave the health issues for the doctors to focus on and their education and keeping our children in school. I'm a dental assistant and I see countless patients come in all day long and they disclose personal information to me all day. I can tell you, I've heard so many stories of their students, their children being A-students that are struggling, they're lazy, unfocused, depressed. This model is not working, it's not working for anybody. We need them in school full-time, which leads to the fact that contact tracing and quarantining, this concept needs to be abolished. It's unrealistic to prepare for. And yes, if someone tests positive, they should stay home, as if, if they're sick with any other illness. I understand that the virus can be passed around, but it's, it's a virus, it's new, it's going to be. There's no data to support masking and forcing these poor kids to breathe in their own carbon dioxide. I'm begging all of you to look at their sweet faces and let them socialize and see expression. Breathe clean air, love unlimited. They are minimally affected by the virus, but much affected by the fear and uncertainty that surrounds it. Masks are ever-present reminder to children that things are not normal and profoundly unhealthy for them. We are demanding answers on the vaccine clinics in school. I'm hoping that this is not real life, but it's completely unethical to take away parental rights. Everyone that disagrees thinks that this is about vaccines and the government actually. Everyone that disagrees thinks that this is about vaccines and the government actually cares about you. If that were so, they would be giving free nutrition consults and growing crops to enrich our bodies. Please open your eyes. They do not care about your health. This is a movement much bigger than we can imagine. All we can do is unite and fight for our children's freedom and love thy neighbor. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shane Echols, here to speak on masks and CRT. List his address is 527 Ten Point Lane in Cranberry Township.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, thanks for hearing me tonight. This is my first board meeting here. My wife and I chose out of all of Western Pennsylvania 13 years ago to move here to raise our children. We're proud to be in Seneca Valley School District. My wife and I work in the public education sector in neighboring districts. I understand the difficulties that you folks and others in our community have had to work with, with pandemic. I could come up here and give a lot of numbers. What I would like to say as a parent, as a father, as a husband, I am fully in support of parental choice and rights. I don't want to see my children masked. If my children are forced to mask, my wife and I are public education people. If our children are forced to mask, we're taking them out of Seneca. We love Western Pennsylvania. My wife and I newly married, moved across the country and decided we wanted to raise our children back here where we were from. We chose this district of any. We're happy to be here. We like this district. We've had excellent experiences with our teachers, mostly through the Hain building. My oldest son is special needs. He's autistic. He now is in this campus. I can tell you the social and emotional difficulty that he and other peers like him have experienced with stress and anxiety, with the irregular schedule of things that have occurred with remote learning in the classroom. I understand there's a lot of hoops to jump through. There's a lot of people to make happy. The bottom line is health and safety for our children. I don't see the data that masking is healthy. In fact, I've recently seen two studies, one done in Germany and one here in the States, that show that the germ factory of the cloth masks that are not N95, that are not worn correctly, are more than likely more detrimental than helpful. As far as CRT, I haven't even heard that address tonight. That is something that's alarming to me. I am not in support or in favor of it. I have not heard what you folks have to say about that. So I'll reserve a comment or question about that until afterwards. Thank you for your time.
This is that part I was talking about. We gotta take care of some business so we can extend this meeting. So just give us a couple of seconds here, please. Okay, folks, I think I'm gonna do this right. So I'm going to look for a motion that we suspend our policy that says the public comment is only allowed for 30 minutes.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Do we need a roll call vote for this or can we do a voice vote? Okay. All those in favor of suspending the policy, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The policy is suspended for the rest of the meeting. Okay, sorry about that. Let's move on. The next speaker is Tyler Bentrum, here to speak on masks. List his address is 280 Whitestown Road. And I am his school board rep. It's nice to see you again, Mr. Ben.
Nice to see you, Mr. DiTullio. I'll keep it short here tonight. I'm here in support of parental choice to make the decision whether or not their children wear masks to school. I'm here tonight. I have a third grader. I'm praying to God that he's not about to start his third year impacted somehow by COVID masks rules. I'm also here for my first grader. She received mask training in school and was so strongly regimented that when she got motion sick on a school bus on her way to summer school, she never removed her mask to throw up. So I think on a positive note, you know, if you don't watch the TV, if you don't look at your news feeds, I think in this world, you know, things are fairly normal. I think a lot of the parents in here probably agree. Swimming pools look pretty full. The trampoline parks are in business, birthday parties. Hopefully people are getting out on vacations. You know, let's, let's focus on the positive here. I will say that things are different now in the pandemic. Whenever this started, my wife and I were wearing masks to protect ourselves, to protect others. Well, you know, now people have the opportunity to be vaccinated if they want to be vaccinated. And I realize my children are too young to be vaccinated, but their grandparents, their parents, everybody has done what they thought was right and got the vaccine. So I think it's time to go back to school without masks on. Reading that there's a lot of recommendations out there. So perfect. Masks are recommended. They should be optional. Let the parents, even in some cases, maybe let the kids decide. And I just would like to ask that we don't go into the numbers game again this year. You know, I, I've, I know somebody who tested, came back negative, next day they were positive. They tested two days later, so they get back to work and they were negative again. Well, there was a positive tally in their county that, you know, I'm kind of scratching my head saying, did you really have it? So I thank you for your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker tonight is Kelly Mediate and here to speak on masks. List her address is 116 Williams Point in Evan City. And I don't know if that's in, is that you or would that be Kathy? Are you in the borough of Evan City?
I'm in Forward Township.
Forward Township, that makes me your.
Great. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
So I'm glad to be here tonight. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I spent a lot of time thinking and praying on what to say and how to best prepare for tonight. But I think I really just can echo those that have already spoken on parental choice. I think that what has been shared has been marvelous by all of you to, you know, stand here, represent your children. I'd ultimately come here to share with you our voice of letting our children be free. I don't know how I could answer questions from my daughter who's in the third grade of why did I get to be free and with all my friends all summer with no masks and now have to start the school year with a mask on? I do have a speech that I prepared for tonight, but ultimately my thesis statement and my point is let us choose as parents what's best for our children to be able to balance both their health risks, their psychological risks, and also, also the lessons that we want to teach them as parents and help to mold them to live in freedom, to not live in fear and to be brave, to be who they are and to think critically about, you know, what's going on around them. To me, a mask is a symbol of fear. It's a symbol of control. And that, you know, I agree, there's data available and statistical data to manipulate whichever way you want to have it go one way or the other. I have data. I'd be glad to provide that, but I don't think you really want to hear or see that today. There's a quote from Nelson Mandela that has famously been said that there can be no keener revelation of a society's soul than the way in which it treats its children. So since March of 2020, our children have been masked. They've been asked to adapt. They've been asked to isolate. They've been asked to take on a lot. I think that at the time, we knew very little about COVID. We knew very little, little about the risks, but we know much more now. Since March of 2020, that's 515 days of their, you know, short time to be children of 18 years, right? That's basically 10% of their childhood that has been masked. 10% of their childhood that we basically asked them to bear the burden of our fear and the uncertainty and risk that we didn't know. We know now though, that masks aren't effective. They're dirty. They're dangerous, psychologically scarring our children. And I believe that they're abusive and cruel to ask children to mask, to not be able to see each other's smiles, to not be able to interact with each other, to listen to their teachers. I am a full-time professional in our community. I'm a full-time mother as well. And I'm also a full-time and devoted Christian. I'm proud to say that here. And in the Bible, specifically in Isaiah 4110, it says, "Fear not, for I am with you. Be not dismayed, for I am your God. I will uphold, I will uphold you with my righteous right hand." And so I, as a parent, do not want to teach my daughter to live in fear. I want to teach her to live by and embrace that verse in the Bible. And wearing a mask to me is not something that, it's counterproductive to that. So I'm asking for the choice to be able to teach my daughter in the ways that I want to, that my husband and I are doing. And so please, you know, continue to listen to our voice for those that are here asking for parental choice regarding masks. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and I appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you very much. Sorry about that. Our next speaker is Stephanie Lane, here to speak on masks. List her address is 532 German Street in Harmony. That would make Mr. Whitson. It's nice to see you again.
Hi. I'm a little shorter first today than last week. My name is Stephanie Lane. I have two children in the district. I have a kindergartner and a first grader. Both kids are vaccine injured and have autism. What the first thing I'd like to address is the public hearing that took place on Friday, August 6th with the Education Committee and how currently Pennsylvania is not in a declaration of emergency. So there's no law written that masks are legal to impose on children. So I'm curious if the numbers do go up, where is that legality? And as parents, if that happens, some of us might seek a lawyer. Because here in Pennsylvania, you know, we're sick. The one thing that has irritated me from the absolute beginning, because this is exactly how the pandemic started. Cases, 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 vaccines, vaccines, vaccines. That's all it is. You know, but we're not looking at the cases. How many of these cases, they do not equal death. They only equal sometimes symptoms, but sometimes people have no symptoms. And some of these symptoms, which could be the flu, or let's say you ate a bad fish going to the restaurant, you could have diarrhea. You could throw up because you got nauseous in the car. You know, we're treating every single symptom as what we deal with sometimes on a daily basis that we never used to deal with, including the flu. And you, everyone was so strict last year. You know, you could barely send your kid to school with a runny nose. Hey, guess what? You can have allergies. And guess what? Now people think they have COVID. You know, how many of those people are not in the hospital? But you're going to hear from the experts who want these vaccines to be the main priority, because guess what? The CDC wants to inoculate as many people as possible. It's been an agenda from there for years. Just look at their ASAP meeting reports. I can find them and send them to you because I've been listening to the ASAP meetings for quite some time. Also, we know PCR tests are not accurate. And if this truly is so contagious, why are you all social distancing this week when last week all of you were in the first row, sitting next to each other? We have how many people sitting next to each other? Pools are filled, urban air, kids are touching each other, grabbing things, feet everywhere. And guess what? A lot of us here are fine. We're alive. Let's just get these kids back to school and stop blaming the kids for everything. And if you're scared, wear a mask. If you want to get a vaccine, get a vaccine. But guess what? Pennsylvania has personal choice and religious freedom for vaccines also. So you're going to continue to hear, let's vaccinate, let's vaccinate. But guess what? We have that personal choice. Like such a personal freedom, because I do not want socialism or communism. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrew Barclay, here to speak urging masks to remain optional. List his address is 108 Pine Street in Zillenopel and make Mr. Jacobs your school board rep. And you have four minutes, sir.
Thank you, board, and thank you, everybody for permitting me the time to speak tonight. My wife and I are here to urge the board to keep the masks as an optional choice. We base this on our experience with our kids last year and all that they went through. Our kids had a difficult time with the masks and the constant changing of the goalposts for wearing them, not wearing them, in-person instruction, virtual instruction. I believe, and my wife and I believes also, that it is the parents' decision to take responsibility for the health of their, their children. I realize that our opinion will not be accepted by everybody in this room and that is okay. It is okay to agree to disagree. And you should have the choice to do what's right for your children. And we can go through this with the CDC numbers. But quite frankly, I don't trust the CDC if they would tell me rain was wet. They have been totally inconsistent from the very beginning of this whole pandemic. And I believe it to be nothing more than a political football to control people. Because we, we deal with influenza every year. We deal with colds every year. We deal with other illnesses every year, but nothing has come close to approaching what we are dealing with the past couple of years. I want to read an excerpt from the Wall Street Journal. This is from an op-ed piece by Marty McCary and Cody Misner from today. It says, "Do masks reduce COVID transmission in children? Believe it or not, we can only find a single retrospective study on the question. And its results weren't conclusive, yet two weeks ago, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention sternly decree that 56 million US children and adolescents vaccinated or not should cover their faces regardless of the prevalence of infection in their community. The authorities in many places took the cue to impose mandates in schools and elsewhere on the theory that masks can do no harm. That isn't true. Some children are fine wearing a mask, but others struggle. Those who have myopia can have difficulty seeing because the mask fogs their glasses. This has long been a problem for medical students in the operating room. Masks can cause severe acne and other skin problems. The discomfort of a mask distracts some children from learning. By increasing airway resistance during exhalation, masks can lead to increased levels of carbon dioxide in the blood. And masks can be vectors for pathogens if they become moist or used for too long. In March, Ireland's Department of Health announced that they won't require masks in schools because they may exacerbate anxiety or breathing difficulties for some students. Some children compensate for such difficulties by breathing through their mouths. And chronic and prolonged mouth breathing can alter facial development. It is well documented that children who mouth breathe because adenoids block their nasal airways can develop a mouth deformity and elongated face. The experience with our kids last year, the one, our one child said that it was torture. Of course, she thinks not eating vegetable or eating her vegetables is torture. So take that in perspective, but I believe the kids should, or the parents should have the option to choose for their children, not any government agency, not any school board. It should be the parents' choice. And I would recommend to everybody here, if you're a person of faith, start praying for your children in the morning before they leave for school. Pray for their protection. Pray for their health. Pray for their safety, because we are definitely living in a world with troubled times. And every little bit of prayer helps. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brandy Rens, here to speak on masks. List her address. I cannot read your. Thank you. You have four minutes.
Thanks. Well, I'm talking about masks, but I felt like maybe I shouldn't. But I kind of had a prepared piece, so I guess I'll try and shorten it as best as I can. To the board and administrators of Seneca Valley, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to express our concerns this evening. My husband and I have been Cranberry Township residents since the fall of 1999 and been SV parents since 2005. We have watched many of the board members and administrators sitting before you tonight grow into the positions you all hold today. From soccer coaches, parents of my children's peers, elementary and middle school principals now administrators, to Spanish teachers. I do not doubt the care and concern that each of you hold for the students in this district. Our oldest is a 2017 graduate of Seneca Valley. And in February of 2020, while she was studying college in New York City, she began to call us daily, telling us something was going on in New York that was not yet being discussed on the news and the papers and the media. Less than a month later, she was home for what we thought was two weeks. And then she, reality, she only returned to New York twice in the last 18 months. Twice to move because we thought she'd be able to return to finish school and once to graduate this May. As a side note, she is now gainfully employed by Mark Wahlberg's performance-inspired company. Kind of a mom brag. In the beginning of this pandemic, I was terrified. But time has marched on, and my fear has shifted towards the mental health of our children. Many people that have spoken tonight have spoken of their elementary schoolers. At this time, I only have an incoming sophomore here in the IHS. I'm asking that we are able to choose for our children, and that masks be a personal choice. I understand for all of you here and for all of the parents in the district that this is not simple. We all have different beliefs. We come from different backgrounds. And that is okay. And I hope that we can all continue in this community to respect each other's differences because it does not seem that way on social media these days. This is about the mental health of our future children. And like I mentioned, specifically my high school son. The mental health and really everyone, not just our students, has suffered over the last almost two years. Forced masking, quarantines, keeping them from friends and activities, only adding to that struggle. My son was born into an environment of expressionless, difficult communication. And when my husband and I were chosen to be his parents when he was five years old, we have spent over a decade undoing an early childhood that lacked emotion, comfort, support, and any kind of facial expression. Only to have to battle that labor of love being torn back down over the last two years. High school is hard. High school in a district our size is harder. And we have chosen to stay here because of the special education program that Seneca can provide for him. When you are already worried about your place in this world as a high school student, and you cannot read the room because your face is masked, your teacher's face is masked, your peers' face is masked, a necessary life skill is being taken away from you. Classmates, teachers experiencing on a day-to-day basis with this faceless, expressionless school day is only adding to the amount of self-doubt and mental health strains our adolescents are already feeling. I just ask you to keep this in mind as you make your difficult decisions throughout this school year. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Stacy Adams, here to speak on parent choice masks. List her address as 133 Grove Hill Lane, Zillenopel. That would make Mr. Jacobs your school board member.
Thank you. A little background, so you understand where I'm coming from. I have a soon-to-be kindergartner, and she is more than excited. I am an alum 2020, and I did K through 12 in this school and loved it, which actually was the reason that my husband and I moved back into the district. We were in Mercer County last summer. We moved here so my child could go to kindergarten and Seneca the rest of, through 12th grade. And then on top of that, I'm also a teacher at Schaller. I'm fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. And so I kind of feel like I have the perspective, and I want to emphasize maybe more the teacher perspective of this. I am so much more for mass choice because of what I saw in my students. I mean, yes, I want it for my kindergartner. I want her to see faces. I want her to know when someone's kind of upset with her because she's not following the rules. I want her to see someone laughing because she's silly, and she really is. Probably good luck kindergarten teacher at CVE. But like, what I saw in my students over the last 18 months is a detriment to who they are. If I could advocate for all of them and beg you to see them as students and not numbers, they are not numbers. They are kids. And I'm not an emotional person, but like, they are full of anxiety. They are full of fear. We are doing it to them. The adults making these decisions are doing it to them. And as a teacher, I emote. I teach health and physical education. I teach on body language. A huge part of that is the face. A huge part of that is the hygiene. And let me tell you, they are disgusting. Kids are gross. Mine is right up there. So I'm talking about her fingers in her nose, or who knows where else. Kids are disgusting. I'm a lunch duty monitor. When they're allowed to take off their masks, they're touching them. They're putting them on the table. They put them back on. They go up and get a napkin. They take them off. They eat their food, finger food mostly in our cafeterias. They are constantly using the masks wrong. And they're gross, and they're disgusting. The snot, the saliva, them sneezing, them coughing, the hygiene is horrible in a mask. So physically speaking, they're gross. Mentally and emotionally, we're destroying our kids. And I've seen, I've 16 years, I'll be at Schaller this coming year. I love my job, and I am so not looking forward to go back to it only because I want to teach them. I want to teach their faces. I want to love on them. I want to share my compassion for who they are. Help them develop their character, not live in fear or depression or scared to do something because our society is saying, put a mask on your face. Don't emote. Be scared of walking outside or sitting next to your friend. It's ridiculous. And so I implore you to see beyond the numbers because they're a number games. And everyone, that's great. They are human beings that we are called to love on, to educate, to care for. They're going to be taking care of us 20, 30, 50 years from now. And they're human. And lastly, as a teacher, I got COVID. It wasn't because of any of my students. I had 187 kids on my rosters. 187 kids. None of them actually had COVID. None of them had COVID. Some of them stayed home because they were quarantined, because we followed all the rules. I got COVID from another adult with contact tracing. I'm fine. I'm okay. I actually thanked the woman that gave me COVID, so to speak, because now I have antibodies, because our bodies are made with immune systems to fight diseases. Our kids need dirt. They need to be around other humans. And I just, I implore you to let us parents decide. You know what? My child doesn't need to wear a mask. And if you have the belief that they need to, then fine, put a mask on. I'm not anti-mask. I'm anti, or I'm pro-choice. And I really think I'm more so advocating just these kids need it. Not just my one child going into kindergarten. All of the kids I see in Schaller, similar to Seneca Valley, they graduate around 400, a little less. But so there's numbers in our school. And so I thank you. I would not want to be in your shoes. Obviously, the last year as a teacher, as an administrator, as a school board, people are going to hate you no matter what you decide. And I'm sorry for that. But we want to have the decision to make that. And so we're asking you to decide. Give it back to us, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brianna Collander. List her address as 501 Hedge Court Road in Cranberry Township. Welcome, and you have four minutes.
Thank you. Hi, and thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I want to thank you all for your service to our district, for your service to our children and our students. I'm a proud graduate of Seneca Valley myself, and now the proud mom of two Seneca Valley students. I stand before you today as a proponent of freedom and an advocate for my children. I feel strongly that parents should have the freedom to choose all medical interventions that their children are subject to, including the wearing of masks. Often, those who oppose a mask mandate or mandated mask policy like myself are painted with an unsightly brush. We're shamed, described as uneducated, irresponsible, selfish, or radical. I believe this to be an untrue portrait. And I want to present some science tonight, as we've all been encouraged to follow the science. Many of the speakers before me shared opinions, and I want to bring another side to that. The PCR test has been mentioned that that was actually created not as a diagnostic tool. It cannot function with having a huge amount of false positives. According to Dr. Inez Kapstein, she says the test can't differentiate between harmless matter and reproductive virus. Just a few weeks ago, July of 2021, the FDA revoked its approval for the PCR test. The CDC removed its request for emergency approval for the PCR test. These tests are now, basically, they're admitting to being inaccurate. There's many studies. I've also sent an email. I have so much to say. I knew it wouldn't fit in the time. So I sent an email to the school board citing many, 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 many studies that I'm not going to be able to mention tonight. But even though the PCR test has now been deemed unreliable and approval has been revoked, it is still being allowed to determine our children's future as it affects the data being reported to the county. Masks are completely ineffective. If you go to commercial websites, Adidas, Under Armour, Old Navy, all of these webs, these commercial sites, that's where our kids are getting their masks. On the website, they say that the masks do not protect against virus or disease, but that's what the kids are wearing. According to the JAMA patient page, "Face masks should only be used on individuals who have symptoms of respiratory infection." It also says, and I quote, "Face masks should not be worn by healthy individuals to protect themselves from requiring respiratory infection because there is no evidence to suggest that face masks worn by healthy individuals are effective." According to guidance from WHO, "There is no direct evidence of universal masking on healthy people being effective in the community." A study from the New England Journal of Medicine did a randomized clinical trial of cloth masks, the only one done to date. The results: caution against the use of cloth masks. The CDC does not allow our children to wear N95s, or any of us for that matter, because they're left for the medical community, which makes sense and is a good idea. But it leaves us with masks that are ineffective. There's other randomized trials that I could quote for you, published on the WHO website as well. And as it was previously mentioned, kids are not wearing these masks properly. They store them in unsanitary places like pockets or backpacks. The WHO provided nine guidances on wearing the masks. I don't think I've followed any of them myself, and I feel that I'm a fairly responsible person. Expecting children to do that is beyond reality. Some of those were washing your hands before putting on a mask every single time, avoiding touching the mask while wearing it. If it's accidentally touched, wash your hands. Don't pull it down around your neck and chin. How many of us have done that? So basically, kids are dirty. Kids, my one child has told me they saw a child blow their nose in their mask and then continue to wear it. So the safety versus the risk, I have so much. I heard the gavel there, so I'm going to try to wrap it up. There's a study out of Florida. Six masks were tested of children in the University of Florida for pathogens, contaminants, bacteria, meningitis, and half had pneumonia. Dentists reporting gum inflammation. A study in JAMA by Harold Wallach, Ph.D., measured unsafe carbon dioxide being three times what it should in the lowest cases. German studies, there's one German study of over 25,000 children that reported impairments of 68% of the children caused by masks. I am thankful the current plan for Seneca is that masks will be optional. I am, however, concerned this will change if the PDE or PDOH that they mandate that we return to masking. In a movie called Hidden Figures, a character challenges a judge to, quote, "be the first." "In making a decision that would shape her future as well as those after her, I ask you to please be the first. Protect our children regardless of unsubstantiated mandates. Since science is dynamic and always evolving, it must be challenged." I'll end with a quote from Thomas Jefferson that resonates with the issue of mandated masking. "There is no justification for taking away an individual's freedom in the guise of public safety. I know we all have our children's health as our utmost priority." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Fiori, here to speak on mask-wearing for students. List her address as 277 Harmony Road in Evan City. Jeff Wooderson, she lists you as your school board rep. You have four minutes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for this opportunity. My name is Jen Fiori. I am a healthcare professional and mother of five. My family and I have lived in Evan City for the past seven years. We will have four children in school this fall, including our little girl, who is exceptionally excited about starting kindergarten. I'm here today with deep concern regarding our children and mask-wearing. By forcing our children to wear masks during the school day, we are depriving them of a most basic human need: oxygen. We are depriving them of proper social interactions and emotional connections. We cannot let this virus, with its 99% survival rate and very, very low rate of infection and transmission in children, continue to destroy our children's future. Masks don't work. Masking the healthy never worked. We have given our children unrealistic expectations of wearing these masks all day, thinking they would easily comply. Our children have been robbed by an upset in their structure and routine. Children thrive on structure and routine. It's vital for their development. Again, like I said before, I'm a healthcare professional. I know science. I understand biology. That being said, the science of masks is flawed. Masks do more harm than good. Two of my children will be in Evan City Elementary this year. There is no air conditioning. It is hot in there the first two months or so. Imagine being a young child in school for eight hours a day, wearing a mask in a room that's 80 degrees. How would that impact your day? Would you be able to properly concentrate? Would you be able to avoid touching and adjusting your mask all day? No, you wouldn't. We need to stop masking our children. In an article that came out last month by the American Medical Association, it states, and I quote, "Wearing face masks increases the amount of carbon dioxide in inhaled air to unhealthy levels." The study measured carbon dioxide levels in 45 children ages 6 to 17 while wearing masks. The normal content of carbon dioxide in the air is 400 parts per million, with anything above 2,000 parts per million considered unacceptable. This report measured averages to upwards of 14,000 parts per million of carbon dioxide in the inhaled air of children wearing masks, which is over six times higher than the unsafe threshold. Another article from the British Medical Journal stated, and I quote, "To date, the risk of infection appears to be greatest in the home situation, nursing homes, and hospitals. There is no evidence on the effectiveness of universal masking of healthy people in the community to prevent infection with respiratory viruses, including COVID-19. A moist mask is a breeding ground for antibiotic-resistant bacteria and fungi, which can undermine immunity." It goes to say, it goes on to say, "Many people report claustrophobic experiences, difficulty getting sufficient oxygen, increased heart rate, nausea and dizziness, and headaches. Furthermore, face masking can provoke an increase in stress hormones with a negative impact on immune resilience in the long term. Face masks prevent the mirroring of facial expressions, a process that facilitates empathetic connections and trust between pupils and teachers. This potentially leads to a significant increase in socio-psychological stress and often escalates into mental behavioral problems in a weakened immune system." Please, respected school board members, I urge you to do what is best for our precious children. Do not force them to wear masks this school year. More than anything, I want my children to be able to breathe while in school and have a physically, emotionally, and mentally healthy school year. Last year was very sad to hear my kids complain every day, distraught about wearing these masks. My 12-year-old complained of headaches almost daily and had an extremely hard time making connections with his peers. It was his worst year by far. So I'm taking a stand and doing what any concerned parent would do. I'm speaking up for what is right, speaking on behalf of my children and urging you to be open to these truths. This should be our decision, the parents' decision. We know what is best for our kids. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Amy Gilbert, here to speak on masks and vaccine mandates. List her address as 257 Strawberry Circle in Cranberry. Ms. Harrison is her school board representative. And I am shocked you actually know your. I am shocked you actually know your district as well. I think it's the first time I've ever seen that on a public.
My friend knew it. Um, good evening. Um, thank you. I, I have been sitting here like everybody, listening to all these speakers and parents, and I absolutely 100% agree with what everyone is saying, so I'm going to keep my notes short. Um, I'm a parent of three in the school district, and I'd just like to take a moment to express how strongly I feel that masking and vaccinating our children is a parental decision. I think it's extremely unethical to take away our own parental rights, um, as anybody would be. I am tired of the mandates being driven by COVID, COVID cases. Moving forward, we know that there will always be cases that fluctuate over periods of time. Regardless of the number of cases, the survival rate for this population, our kids is not over 99% without treatment. I think that statistic is outstanding. I'm not a statistics, I'm not a numbers person, but that one sticks in my head. We don't talk about that. This is 99% survival rate without treatment. And there's also no science that shows that any of these kids have passed on the virus to an adult. I support that we should modify the health and safety policy to make masks optional period, no matter where we move in the number of cases. I fear that I fear that my already healthy kids wearing masks all day. I fear the levels of carbon dioxide, which the speaker before just went into. I fear that they're breathing that all day long. The face sores that they get, the breakouts they get, the disgusting bacteria and E. coli that is constantly touching their mouth and face is disgusting. My fifth grader last year, um, had his mask on. He was walking down a flight of stairs and fell the entire length of the stairs with his 35, 40-pound backpack on. Luckily, he didn't severely get hurt, but had he gotten very hurt, that would have been detrimental to me, and it would have been a problem for the school district because it was on school district property. That's scary. That's something that if you require masks, you are going to have to worry, we're all going to have to worry about every day. They cannot see their feet when they got masks on. This leads me into how masks contribute greatly to our kids' learning environment. I fear another year of my kids not looking forward to going to school. Another year of creating invite, an environment that is isolating, depressing, lacking vibrance and energy. An environment that does not foster connections, self-confidence, and liveliness to learn and grow and to be creative. As a board, I feel, or anyone, we're stepping out of your bounds, uh, your scope of duty to determine what is risky for my children. Every family, every child is different regarding their beliefs, the morals, and their values, which is why parents should absolutely be the ones and the only ones to determine their children's risk. Our job, your job, is to create and enable an environment and an atmosphere that increases individual growth, promotes self-worth and confidence amongst our children. We should be creating a robust learning environment so creativity can run rampant and kids can be happy and social and look forward to coming to school. We should be creating a healthy environment, mind, body, and spirit. We should be working on getting these kids active because you know what, at the end of the day, if they're healthy and active, they're going to fight whatever is coming at them if they're going to be dealing with health issues. We should be supporting an environment that brings our Seneca Valley community back together after the last year and a half, two years. We should be helping teachers foster their relationships with their students and helping parents and teachers and admin come together and get our Seneca Valley community back on a path of growth and development for all. Creating mandates does the opposite of all of this. That's what our focus should be. Never mind the numbers, never mind all the statistics, because like everybody said earlier, you can tweak the numbers based on what your values and beliefs are. We need to make this a healthy environment for these kids, and they need to want to come back to school. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jason Statfeld. List his address is 124 Breakneck Street in Calery, PA. Uh, does not have a subject listed to speak on. So when you get to the microphone, Mr. Statfeld, if you could just introduce the topic you'd list or wish to speak. I'll take your time.
Yes, sorry, I didn't list the subject because, uh, I wasn't really sure if I was going to speak. I didn't know how these things went. This is my first time coming, but, uh, just, uh, after seeing all the stuff with the masks and, uh, the stuff that happened over the past year, not to mention anything like the mascot, just like petty stupid stuff to my, to me anyhow. But like, uh, I'm proud to see all these people here cheering on and, uh, going for the, uh, parent choice. I think that's really important. I didn't know how many people showed up to these things, and I thought it'd be important if I came. But, uh, yeah, thank you. That's, that's about it. Thank, thank you to these people who actually came and prepared speeches.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Lindsey, excuse me, Lindsey Douglas. List her address is 107 Winterbrook Drive in Cranberry Township. Here to speak on masks and your school board rep is Jim Nichol.
Hi, I'm the little one, so I can pull that down. Um, we've been here for over an hour of listening to comments, so I'm gonna, um, not waste anyone's time, just go on the record. I also am for the parent choice. And I'm really looking forward to seeing how everyone votes. Thanks.
Our last speaker is Erin Kenyon. Here to speak on return to school program. List her address as 203 Whispering Oaks Drive and Jim Nichols as her school board rep. And Jim's neighbor.
Hi, everybody. Thanks. Thanks for letting everyone speak tonight. That's very, we got everyone in. I am for parent choice. And after going through this whole school year, the last, my, almost two years of school, when my kindergarten, then kindergarten started, finished, finished up his kindergarten year with having the lock, starting the lockdowns and the constant, constant hand sanitizing. And then he started first grade and he, the masks, how they affected the kids' learning. It was to, to see that. He, he hated, he hates going to school. He does not want to go to school if he has to wear a mask. None, none of my kids do. They're, they're kind of like, I don't. Do we have to go? They had headaches and for first grader, learning how to read and, and write with the teacher having a mask on and can't see, and he wasn't able to see faces and to see expressions of his, his classmates. He couldn't even really tell me what they looked like outside of school. Not, not, you know, they, if they saw, oh, I think that kid is in my class, but I don't really recognize them because they had a mask on all day. So I, hopefully going into this year of school, we have a parent choice and I agree with everything that the, a lot of the speakers had said tonight. And I thank you, board, and that's, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. So that takes us through our public comment section. I will say, um, you know, one speaker mentioned, you know, how many people are here. This is not typical. Usually there are not folks in the auditorium like this, so, um, it is nice to see everyone here. I'd also like to thank everyone for the professionalism and kindness that you've all shown. It, not just hearing your public comments, but in those of you and others that have sent in, um, you know, letters and communication to us. I would say almost everyone, there has been a, thank you for what you do. We know it's difficult. Here's our opinion. That doesn't happen in all school districts. And you just have to watch the news to find out, you know, what other school boards have to go through. I am, I'm very proud of this community for all the difficult things that we do, uh, community support. Even though we don't all agree 100% on all the issues, the fact that we can come here and have a, a a dialogue on it and a discussion, um, and not angry outbursts is, you know, it's a tribute to everyone that lives in this district and this community and how we do pull together. And it, it, it makes me proud to sit in a seat knowing that we have that type of support from our community. So thank you for that. We're going to move on now in our agenda. Uh, we'll go to treasurer's reports next. Those are included in your backup. And I am actually going to look for a motion to approve these. The treasurer's report that's in your backup, as I mentioned. The general fund bills providing your backup in the 2020, 21 grand total amount of $2,015,658.21 and the 2021, 22 grand total of $3,460,406.67. The construction fund bills also provide in your backup, the 2020, 21 grand total is $2,403,278.87 and the 2021, 22 grand total in the amount of $3,038,960.82. And I would look for a motion to approve those items. Uh, thank you, Mr. Widderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nichol. Is there any discussion on any of those issues? Hearing and seeing none. Lisa, if you call the role, please.
Mr. Nichol.
President.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Bradel.
Long night.
Yes. Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Widderson.
Yes.
And Mr. DeTulio.
Yes.
Motion carries with seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to administrative action. Mr. Nichol, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would like to make a motion with regards to the following administration action items. Uh, the first is under board policies, uh, to approve the following board policies, all of which have been provided in our board backup. The first is policy 201, admission of students. It is a revision and it is in its first reading. Policy 212, reporting student progress, also a revision. It is also in its first reading. Policy 218, student discipline, a revision in its first reading. Policy 718, service animals, a revision in its first reading. And finally, policy 008, organizational chart, it is a revision and it is in its first reading. The second item is our 2021, 2022 student teacher calendar. To approve the revised 2021, 2022 student teacher calendar to include Thursday, May 26th, 2022 at 6:00 PM as the senior graduation date and Friday, May 27th, 2022 as a rain day. That calendar is in our backup. The third are transportation contracts. To approve the following transportation contracts, which are provided in our backup. The first is for one family to transport their child to North Catholic during the 2021, 2022 school year at a cost of $11.28 per day. The second, for one family to transport their child to DT Watson during the 2021, 2022 school year at a cost of $19.90 per day. The third is one family to transport their child to DT Watson during the 2021, 2022 school year at a cost of $62.33 per day. And finally, one family to transport their child to DT Watson during the 2021, 2022 school year at a cost of $37.20. The next item, which I am very pleased to be, uh, including in my motion, is an agreement between the Pennsylvania State Education Association, local Seneca Valley Education Association, and the Seneca Valley School District. To approve the agreement between the PSEA, SVEA, and Seneca Valley School District effective July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2026. And finally, uh, our Cranberry Township Police Services Agreement. To approve the police services agreement with Cranberry Township, that agreement is in our backup. That is my motion, Mr. President.
Thank you for the motion. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any discussion or questions? Here, oh, Mr. Peterson.
I'd just like to ask, um, I know it's not the biggest bullet in the gun right here, but, um, what services North Catholic provide that we don't, that we justify our paying to transport? And if that answer's not available this evening, I'd like a follow-up.
I don't have that information in front of me. Uh, Mr. Pearson? Could you come to the mic on that topic? Thank you.
Uh, the child is, child's a, uh, in a wheelchair. So the mom is willing to transport on her own.
And this is a reminder that we are responsible for transportation, public dollars to parochial schools.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Any other questions? Oh, Ms. Bradel?
Not on that issue, but I would like to comment on something else.
Absolutely.
I just, first of all, I'd just like to extend a thank you to yourself, Mr. Nichol, Dr. Vitale, Ms. Boback and Ms. Bertner. And if I missed anybody else that worked on the agreement, I apologize, but you guys have been working on this for months. And with everything that we've gone through the past year and a half, I think it's just very commendable that we're in this position and we're not dealing with that situation right now in addition to the pandemic. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none. Lisa, if you call the role, please.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Bradel.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Nichol.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Widderson.
Yes.
Mr. DeTulio.
Yes.
Motion carries with seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Thank you very much. Um, moving on to instruction action. Uh, Ms. Harrison, you do have a heavy left today, so take your time.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following instruction action items, all of which have items in the backup. First is the Allegheny Intermediate Unit Services Agreement. Approve the agreement for the special education programs and services with Allegheny Intermediate Unit for the 2021, 22 school year. Next is the Beaver Valley Intermediate Unit Agreement. Approve the agreement for special education programs and services with Beaver Valley Intermediate Unit for the 2021, 22 school year. Next is the Glade Run Lutheran Services Education Placement Agreement. Approve the agreement with Glade Run Lutheran Services to provide educational placement services for the 2021, 22 school year. Next is Glade Run Lutheran Services Therapy Services Agreement. Prove the agreement with Glade Run Lutheran Services to provide therapy services for the 2021, 22 school year. Next is the Sign Language Interpreting Professionals LLC Client Agreement. Approve the agreement with Sign Language Interpreting Professionals LLC SLIP to provide interpreting services for deaf and/or hard-of-hearing students during the 2021, 22 school year. Next is the Epic Health Services Incorporated DBA Aviana Healthcare Agreement. Approve the agreement with Epic Health Services Incorporated DBA Avena Healthcare to provide healthcare backup healthcare, I'm sorry, services to students during the 2021, 22 school year. Next is the MHY Family Services Agreement. Approve the agreement with MHY Family Services to provide services during the 2021, 22 school year. Next is the Baller area school district program placement agreement. Approve the program placement agreement with Baller area school district to provide services during the 2021, 22 school year. Next is the School Assist Consulting LLC Proposal. Approve the School Assistance Consulting LLC Proposal to provide professional development leadership coaching during the 2021, 22 school year. Next is two grant dispersments. The first one is grant permission to apply for and disperse the approved 2021, 22 statewide cohort RTI SLD series teams grant in the amount of $20,000 for cross-disciplinary multi-tiered system of supports team training at Evan City Elementary and Middle Schools. And the second grant is grant permission to apply for and disperse the approved Universal Design for Learning UDL Classroom Resources Grant 2021, 22 in the amount of $10,000 for use of UDL resources in the intermediate and senior high school. Next is conferences, approve conference requests. The next one is emergency resolution for continu- continuity of instruction during COVID. Renew the COVID emergency instruction resolution. And the last is early admission, approve the early admission to kindergarten for three students for the 2021, 22 school year.
Thank you for the motion, Ms. Harrison. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Nichol. Any discussion on any of these issues? I will just, uh, thank, you know, just so, since we do have a, a large crowd, uh, the grant dispersments, uh, the folks that do that, they go out, they find grants, you know, that, that's putting money into our classrooms that's not on the taxpayers. So when folks do that, I like to acknowledge them. Dr. Poyano's here, so I'd like to personally say thank you to her. Um, Dr. Alz, of course, every time we see her, we make sure to say thank you. So when you see folks like this, if you're paying attention now or in the future and you know, you know, any of these teachers or administrators are going for these grants, you know, please, you know, give them a thank you because it is helping our district. So when you see folks like this, if you're paying attention now or in the future, and you know, you know, any of these teachers or administrators are going for these grants, you know, please, you know, give them a thank you because it is helping our district and not on the taxpayer. So, uh, just wanted to point that out. Hearing no other questions, comments? Uh, Lisa, if you call the roll, please.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Whitterson?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Bradle?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. DeTulio?
Yes.
Motion carries with seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Thank you very much. First, next one, I'll take this. Uh, this is to, um, look for a motion that we approve the twenty twenty one, twenty two Seneca Valley Health and Safety Plan for Return to School to approve the twenty twenty one, twenty two Seneca Valley Health and Safety Plan for Return to School as providing your backup. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Any discussion? Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'd like to acknowledge the impressive group of parents that came here tonight to speak and uh, on behalf of their beliefs about their, their children and parental rights. Um, I, I think for the sake of the conversation, um, we also need to realize there are probably an equal and opposite number of parents who believe the other direction that, that, um, masks should be mandated. Um, I'm quite sure that if you read the, um, amount of email we get, you'd see there's a pretty much a fifty fifty split. The second point I would like to make is that the article that was referenced several times uh, regarding the buildup of carbon dioxide has been retracted by JEM as being inappropriate and unscientific. Those, those data have been, uh, just, has, have been discarded, uh, by the Journal of the American Medical Association. Third point I might like to make is, um, that the wearing of the mask is, and please keep in mind that I've just motioned the approval of this, but the wearing of the mask is not only an issue, not only an issue of, uh, your child. And again, I applaud the fact that you're here to defend your beliefs about your children tonight, but the mask is also used to, to protect those who, um, may be infected by a carrier of the, the disease. And that, uh, wearing a mask, uh, I, I, I couldn't agree more. I think if you go to China, you go and buy a mask off a stand and think that's going to provide, um, appropriate cover, uh, that's a fool's paradise. The, I, the thought of the mask being, um, somehow contaminated or dirty, you wash clothes every day, every day, every week. You wash, um, handkerchiefs every day, every week. You should wash your masks every day, every week. Sure, there's going to be a certain amount of pathogens on the mask. There's pathogens everywhere. There's pathogens on the table here. So I'm not discarding, uh, your sincere belief that, that that's a significant issue. I'm just suggesting that it may not be a determining issue as to whether or not your child should wear a mask. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Anyone else wish to comment? Mr. Nickel? Mr. Nickel?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'm not exactly sure where to start with this. Um, I will tell you that, uh, I mean, I certainly read the sentiment in the room. Um, and so my comments or my thoughts or my opinions may or may not sit well with everyone. I hope you will, uh, respect sort of my, um, right to agree to disagree with some of what you may have said. Um, I'll reiterate a comment that Mr. Peterson made with regards to, I mean, the correspondence that we see um, suggests that there are significant numbers of people in our community that are in favor of masking. Now, you had said earlier, where are they tonight? They're not here tonight, but they have been vocal. They have corresponded with us. I believe they're out there. Where I'd like to go next, and this may be a little jumbled. I've got a lot of notes on my, on my piece of paper in front of me, but I will tell you that I'm not comfortable with the C D C and the different classifications they've put out there and a generalization for their recommendation to different specific geographies in our country, specific geographies here in Seneca Valley. I wasn't particularly comfortable with Pennsylvania Department of Education or the Pennsylvania Department of Health doing the same thing. I will tell you that when we had to sign the attestation for Seneca Valley School District, I happened to be board president at the time and I had to personally sign that. I wasn't comfortable with it. I didn't like it. I'm more in favor of local control of decisions that we make. You know, whether that's on taxation, whether that's on the issue we have in front of us tonight, I think it should be a decision that we make. It shouldn't be a decision that others make for us. I will tell you that, um, I'm a lot more concerned with the, uh, local measurements of transmission that Dr. Patel mentioned earlier in, in her comments, which we mine ourselves. Um, it's not reports that are given to us and we can all step back and decide what we want to believe or don't want to believe that's out there in the media, on social media. Um, I've been thrilled that Lisa Mislin, who happens to be our board secretary and the administrative assistant, Dr. Tal, is every single day mining that data. Um, we take that data, we collate it, and we turn it into information. And information is what's power, not just the data. I believe that if we're going to have some measure, it should be data that is local to the Seneca Valley School District, perhaps to Butler County. Um, I will make a point of mentioning to a very early comment that, and I think Dr. Patel mentioned this. When you think back to a year ago, there were three classifications. That was, uh, low, uh, moderate and substantial. There are now four. Um, we have commented and we've had some conversations internally that we don't really see and or understand what the triggers are for the C D C movement from one classification to the next. Again, I'm just trying to reinforce that to the extent we have some sort of measurement, some benchmark for a pivot to a requiring of masks to be worn by our students, it should be something that is is doubted that we uncover and a decision that we make and not be made for us. Now, I will say to one of our latter, uh, folks who spoke up, where I will agree to disagree is that I don't believe that we should not consider where the numbers are, period, as it relates to choice. It is my opinion, and again, it's just my opinion. You can agree with it. You can, uh, disagree with it. But I, and I'll step back, I'm in favor of returning to Seneca Valley School District for all of your children with the option to wear a mask or to not wear a mask, given where we are at this point in time. One of the things that we said each and every meeting last year was that we were going to pay close attention to the situation at hand and make decisions and pivot to the extent we felt that it was necessary for the safety of our students. At the time, some of what that included, probably most of what that included, was whether or not we came back for five days a week instruction. Now it's about masking. Again, it's just my opinion, but I believe that there is a threshold upon which, when we think of the measurements of transmission in our community, in our zip codes, that to the extent we pass that threshold, and, and I will have a separate motion, uh, just after this, irregardless of how this one, uh, moves forward, where I believe we should have a measurement that says, if we pass this threshold, then we should move to a mandated masking requirement. And again, that's not going to be popular tonight. I get that. And in particular, uh, Ms., I see you shaking your head. That was your opinion, your comment that no matter where the numbers are, period, we should have choice. I will again, just say that as much as I am in support of returning to school right now with that option, and I support every aspect of the plan that we have in front of us. I believe that one place our, our plan is lacking is that there should be some measurement. There should be something for people to tangibly see where we may turn, where we may pivot as a board, or where we may pivot as a district to say, for this period of time, and these numbers are going up pretty steeply right now. There's an expectation that they will go down. I fully believe this won't be something that is something your children are going to have to deal with for the entire school year. But if we have a level of transmission that gets to a level of significant concern based on numbers, based on the measures of transmission, I believe that based on the safety and security of all of our students, that we should be prepared to pivot for whatever hopefully short period of time that is. I don't like people changing the goalposts. I don't expect us to change those goalposts. No matter what my vote is on this safety plan, I will have this separate motion, and I will finish by saying that you know, through my, I've been on the board now for almost ten years, um, and on a bunch of different issues, I've said, listen, it would be easy, and I'll pick taxes. It'd be easy to say, we're never going to raise taxes. I think it'd also be easy to say, we're going to do everything we possibly can to support and provide a quality education for our students. But I think the challenge that I've felt in the last ten years has been to balance those two perspectives. And I, this is, this could not, there could not, I haven't seen an issue where there's been more polarization, and I'm trying to find some way to strike that balance. Again, this may not be a popular opinion with all of you. I believe our policy is thorough. I, I applaud the research and the work that was done to put it in place. I just believe that there's one aspect of it that is lacking, and that's where I have my misgivings in that, to the extent in Butler County, in the Seneca Valley School District, those numbers, that level of transmission explodes. Um, I believe that we should, as a district, pivot to a mandated mask requirement. That's just my opinion. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Any other members? Mr. Whitterson?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. President. The kind of I had notes prepared and I disregard those and just speak to Mr. Nichols. I don't support the plan if we don't go back immediately with full masking, but I do would consider entertaining Mr. Nichols' alternate, but alternate motion. Do, do you have any idea what that threshold would be? I'm just
I mean, if you're asking me, I mean, I, I, I want to give the districts and the administrations some time to consider what that threshold, I mean, we, we've talked a lot tonight about the number of cases per hundred thousand. We've talked about the P C R percentages. Um, I'd like to have the district, I'd like to give them a period of time ostensibly through the next, uh, uh, action meeting for our board to come back to us with a recommendation of what that, uh, what that threshold would be and which one of the measurements, um, are the right ones or group of them are the right ones and the appropriate ones to consider.
You touched on something. You said the safety and the security, and that, and that's where I come from. I think we will all agree that our goal, everybody in this room, is to get our kids back to school five days a week as safely as possible. I don't think there's any dispute to that. The question becomes, how do we do that in the safest manner? My background for twenty eight years has been in public safety. Not the medical area. My, my area of public safety has been in law enforcement. But when we looked at a situation, we always looked at it, how do we move on this particular situation and do it in the safest manner possible? I believe that the safest manner now is to let the kids go back fully masked. It will give us the ability to keep the schools open as long as we possibly can, because what I don't want to see is rolling closures.
I, I'm going to ask, you know, I, I commented on, on the respect before. I'm going to ask that, you know, that respect be given now for people that disagree on the board. It's a simple ask. So please reserve comments to yourselves, um, and don't interrupt our speakers as we didn't interrupt any of you. Thank you.
Consistency is so necessary for the education of our children. What I don't want to see is us to go back with no mask or mask optional. And then a week or two or a month down the road, oh, we have to close X building for five to ten days because we have an outbreak. And then we get into the situation where mom and dad have to say, okay, kids, last week you didn't have to wear a mask. Now we have to go into quarantine. We have to wear masks again. Let's start out with fully masking and see where the numbers go. As Mr. Nichols said, there may be an indication they may drop. That is not what we're looking at right now. The numbers are continuing to go up every day. Therefore, I can't support the plan without something that says that we will go back to mandatory masking if necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Whitterson. Any other members?
Maybe I'll
Oh, Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you, sir. I support the plan as written, and I, I likewise thank the administration for putting it together. Mr. Nick, I agree with ninety five percent of, of your points in that we can only make, what one thing this thing's taught us is we can only make decisions as of a point in time. Fully agree on that. I am concerned on on establishing a specific numerical threshold because I think what we've learned is it's, it's challenging to pick a single number or a group of numbers. As we learned last year, we had two numbers that we were following, and we often made choices to operate differently than the model we had set out for those two numbers because we thought it was what was best for the district at this time. I also do have concerns about using that threshold only in community transmission, i.e. cases. Now that we know how the virus, we have more data on how the virus reacts with children, we have more data on the effectiveness of the vaccines. I'm concerned that only a threshold that includes cases um, could be a dangerous one. And so while I agree that we need to continue to monitor this and things may change, I am a bit apprehensive about coming up with a threshold because we know how these things can change over time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Any other members? I, I guess I will say that I'm going to support the plan as written as well. Um, I think that it does address a lot of the issues. One of the things that has come up as we've talked about, uh, before was you know, substantial, low, high. What do they mean? How do we get there? Uh, one of the speakers brought up the fact that we did have substantial in our, uh, preliminary plan. That substantial was defined by the Pennsylvania Department of Health who archived that, and that was based on a per hundred thousand, uh, population, what that number was, and they gave different thresholds. That has now been referred, uh, to us to use the C D C for those four classifications now, and those are calculated differently, although they have the same terminology. So moving the goalpost, changing the name has become something very normal, but not correct or not right, that we've had to deal with over the last two years, as most of you know. Uh, I would like to see some number that we can say, this is bad, this is good. Where we are right now, if we were using the same, uh, you three classifications from last year at this time, we would have been in a five day a week much better place. We would not have been substantial. We would not have been anywhere that we would have been necessarily concerned about transmissibility. That's changed because the numbers and the, the calculation has changed, not on us. It's the confusion that comes from, you know, state and federal government. We do need some sort of a metric to know whether we're keeping our kids safe. You know, I've had conversations with, you know, many board members over a lot of, you know, the mask, no mask. Personally, I do not like masks. However, if it gets to a point where we think that that's something we need to do as a district to keep school open five days a week, that's our first goal. You know, we don't want to go back to where we were, you know, twelve months ago to say, we're looking at a cohort model. We're looking at full remote. Five days we know is best. Five days without masks is the absolute best case scenario. But from that point, when we're looking at it, then it's going to be five days with masks. That's got to be the next step. We've got to make sure that we keep the kids in class, we keep the transmission to the community, and those kids, if it's happening, low. The quarantines that folks talked about, that's going to be another issue that we're going to deal with. If we see that we have hundreds of kids in a building being quarantined, it would be irresponsible for us not to pivot. So that's something that we're, we're going to look at. The plan is set up that we can make changes. We can pivot. Mr. Nichols looking for, when do we do that the right way, which was something we're going to talk about after, you know, we go through this vote. But at this time, the plan that we have in place, I think, is, is the right approach. We come back without masks. Uh, and if we have to pivot, we will, and we can then determine as a board, what does that look like and what does that mean? So I am supportive of the plan that's in place in front of us today. So I will give everyone one last chance for comments, questions, concerns. Yes, uh, was, motion was by Mr. Peterson, second one is by Ms. Harrison. So we are ready to go. So, oh, Ms. Bradle, please.
Yes, I would just like to say that I do support the plan.
Yes, I would just like to say that I do support the plan as is right now, but I do want to have that option that if things change, that we have to, to relook at the facts and decide where, what our next move might be. When we were making these decisions last year, we were in a very different situation. I think right now where we are as a community, although, you know, some people have different opinions on the vaccine, but if you feel that that is for you, I, you know, I would encourage more people to do that. And if it's not for you, that's fine, too. Everybody has their personal choice regarding that. But by having more people in the community vaccinated, I think that can help curtail the spread. So I, you know, I'm I'm not going to like impress upon you my personal opinion, but from our standpoint, you know, if I were making the choice just for my child, I know exactly, you know, I'd probably be in your shoes, but we are have to look at it for the whole school community, and that's a very, very difficult position to be in. It's the toughest year and a half by far. And each and every one of us appreciates your comments, and I have read every single email, and there are nights I don't sleep. So please, please be patient with us, be kind, and know that we want the best for your students. And like Mr. President DiTulio said, we want your kids in school five days a week. There's nothing better. But I, there's one other comment I would like to just get a re, have you reconfirm, the busing, the masking on the busing. Where are we with that?
Dr. Patel?
Yes, I can answer that. That is on page 10 of 23 of the plan, and I'm sorry, that's the masking piece. Let me find the federal mandate. It is on page nine of 23. Under a federal order issued in January of 2021, the CDC requires face coverings regardless of vaccination status when on public transportation. This includes on-school buses operated by public and private school systems. However, a driver does not need to wear face covering if they're the only person on the bus.
Dr. Patel?
So then to confirm, the students will still be required to wear them on the bus, even if you, if it's, if they choose not to wear them in school, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any others?
Mr. DiTulio, it's important to point out where I was going next. The mask mandate, page 10 of 23, says the Pennsylvania mask mandate was lifted on June 28th of 2021. Therefore, face coverings are recommended, but will not be required in schools. As per the CDC guidance, schools should consider using universal masking based on the needs of the school community, such as level of transmission and local vaccination coverage. The CDC also recommends masking indoors regardless of vaccination status. But it is important to point out here that it is optional. Students and staff may opt to wear a face covering to protect themselves and others.
Thank you, Dr. Raithel. I think that we've all commented, and we are ready for the vote. So Lisa, if you would, please.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Bradel?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Widowson?
No.
Mr. DiTulio?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
No.
Motion carries with five in the affirmative, two no votes, and two absent.
Thank you very much. Mr. Nickel, you had expressed interest in a, in a motion.
Yeah, before we move on to business finance action, I'd like to make the following motion, and we can clean this up as we, as we feel we need to. I would like to make a motion to direct the administration to present quantitative metrics to the school board of directors by September 20th, which is our next action meeting, for our consideration, upon which, surpassing those metrics, the district will move to a mandate of mask wearing for all students and staff. That is my motion.
Thank you for the motions. There are second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wooderson.
Just a quick comment.
Absolutely.
So folks, I, again, we we may, well, I'm sure we agree to disagree on a lot of points that I've made tonight, but I think that to the extent that this kind of thing, and let me step back, I apologize. This is a living document. We've talked about that all along, even last year. But I don't think that you as parents want something that is vague or unclear. I think that you as parents, each time we get together, don't want to be concerned that we're going to rewrite the entire policy. We want to reserve the right to do that, but what I want is something that you can look at and say objectively, not subjectively. This is the path we're going to take, which is why I'm looking for some quantitative metrics. I don't think that you as parents want to go day-to-day, week-to-week, wondering back in the, in last year, are we going to be five days a week? Are we going to go back to cohort? Are we going to be in masks? Are we going to not be in masks? I want something you can point to and that we can give you some facts and data that we mine ourselves, which is why I like this approach to, you know, this kind of modification or addition to our plan.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Nichols' motion? Ms. Peterson?
I agree with Mr. Nickel. I think it's incredibly important that we, we have a focus, a goal. The frustration from the beginning of this is that we don't know what the endpoint is. We don't know what the target is. We can't predict with any certainty what's going to happen tomorrow. So I think we absolutely need to leave ourselves an outlet that we can change in a perhaps not at a moment's notice, but as quickly as possible, if circumstances dictate that, that needs to be.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the motion? I'll say that, you know, I, I like the idea of metrics. It gives us something that will, that we can look at and it'll trigger a change, right? And then, understand, we are going to look at what's presented, say, by September 20th. It doesn't mean it's going to pass the way it is. It might be modified, might be changed, because we don't really know what that metric's going to look like because, you know, the goalposts have changed so much. So we're saying, let us develop a goalpost that we can then communicate with you, so there is no confusion. And then we can measure against that, and then we'll take action accordingly. If it's something that we get to and we want to change, what we do at that point, the board can still make that change. So it's, it's looking at it, I think, from an objective standpoint. I like Mr. Nichols' approach to say, it'll let you folks know if we see, you know, rampant transmissibility in the zip codes in the community at large. You folks will know that. You'll see it on the news. You'll see it on the CDC website. You'll know what we're, where we're headed before we even get there. So it's something I think that is important to see. You'll know what's going on. And we'll make adjustments, you know, as required. As we've said, you know, for a year and a half, you know, it is a living document. The crystal ball is broken. I guarantee you, when we were talking back in May, when things were starting to look better, I was ready to sit here and say, thank God we didn't have to do this anymore. Well, things changed. And we do have to sit here and do this again and look at this, and, and we're going to continue to do that. And one day this will all be over and we'll look back, but it's not here yet, folks. We're getting closer, but we're not there. So with the motion, with the second, Lisa, if you call the roll, please.
Mr. Widowson?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Ms. Bradel?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DiTulio?
Yes.
Motion carries with six in the affirmative, one no vote, and two absent.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, just real quick. Mr. Nickel? Before we go to business finance action, it's folks, it's been a long evening. I just want you to know we've got just a very short amount left. I want to make sure that I say to you that I, I promise you that to the extent you want to talk with me or with any member of the board, I plan on staying after for as long as you might want to have some, some conversation. But I assure you, we've probably got no more than five minutes left in our meeting.
I would guess, yep. So please stick around.
Please.
So move on to business finance action. Mr. Jacobs, please.
Thank you. I have five business finance actions that I will make a motion for approval, all of which are included in the backup. First relates to professional lawn care and snow removal services. Approve the agreement with Funyac Landscaping LP for professional lawn care and snow removal services commencing July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024. Next is the sale of properties. Consent to the sale of three properties located within the Seneca Valley School District. MP numbers 400 dash S2 dash B43B dash 0000 400 dash S2 dash B43A 0000 400 dash S2 dash B39 dash 0000 by the Butler County Tax Claim Bureau. Next relates to change orders. Approve the construction change orders for Ermun Crest Elementary and Middle School. Fourth item is the Educational Consortium Consulting Service Agreement. Approve the agreement with the Educational Consortium for telecommunications savings to apply for discounts under emergency connectivity fund for 2021, 22 school year. And the last item relates to the Aquatic Center adjusted rental rate for Seneca Valley Swim Club, Swim Club revised current hourly rate per hour from $35 to $50. That ends my motion.
Thank you for the motion, Mr. Jacobs. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Any discussion on any of these issues? Seeing and hearing none? Lisa, call the roll, please.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Widowson?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Bradel?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. DiTulio?
Yes.
Motion carries with seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Personnel, I will I'm listed, but Ms. Wooderson, if you want to take it? All right, I'll take it then, sir. I would look for a motion that we approve the following. This is approval of the non-renewal appointments, contracted services, leaves, and retirements. Is there a motion, please? Thank you, Mr. Wooderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. These items have been discussed in executive session, so we'll move right to a roll call. Lisa, if you would, please.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Ms. Bradel?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Widowson?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DiTulio?
Yes.
Motion carries with seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Thank you very much. We are in receipt of some 30-plus pieces of communication. Again, Ms. Bradel mentioned it before. We do read them all. You know, when you get a response from one of us, you know, it kind of shows you that we read them. However, if you want one-on-one interaction and you just want to send an email and say, hey, have XYZ contact me or a board member contact me, we would be happy to do that. Sometimes it is easiest just to send an email, so feel free to continue to do that. So on that, is there any other items to be brought before the board? I'm going to take two minutes, if you don't mind, for a Peasers update. One of the boards that I do serve on, I was elected by 4,500 school board members to serve on the Teachers Retirement Board, Peasers for short. We have our meetings a few times throughout the year. We had our latest one last week. I just wanted to bring some, there's some good news on Peasers. Peasers has been the newspapers for a lot of bad things. I like to talk about some of the good things that have happened. The current value of the Peasers Fund stands at $70.3 billion. The fund value increased 11.3 billion last year, the largest increase in history. The one-year return rate was 22.7%. The benchmark that we measure against was 21.74%, so we outperformed our own benchmark by almost 5%, 4.42. So those are good things. There is part of the, so everyone else knows, part of what the school pays is into the Peasers, the retirement, and that's calculate every year. There was a change in the asset allocation last year that was going to cause a 6% increase in that rate. I worked with Senator Brown, who's the chairman of the Budget Finance Committee, and we were able to revise some of the asset allocation actuarial assumptions that are used in this calculation. And we were able to get that increase down 44% to 3.27%. Again, it's not great, but I believe that's more manageable than the 5.83% it would have been. So that was some of the good news, and that was supported unanimously by the board, and then the board is fractured as the Peasers board. That was actually a good thing. So I wanted to pass along to you folks before I share it with the rest of the school board members I represent, and you always get the information first, so just want to make sure you have it. So if there's no questions or any other mem, or items to be bought, brought before the board, I would look for a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Was there a second? Thank you, Mr. Wooderson. All those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. We are adjourned.
Good night, everyone. Good night, everyone.